Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes. I need a motion to certify closed session, but to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting in which this certification applies to only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered. Motion, please.
Don't move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes. Do we have any actions from closed session?
I'd like to move that we expel a student from Montgomery County Schools.
Do you have a second?
Student D.
Roll call.
Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
I move that we expel student B. from Montgomery County Public Schools.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes. And a third motion?
Move that we readmit a student to Montgomery County Schools.
Second.
Roll call.
You guys are too busy in the audience tonight, I apologize.
It's okay.
Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. At this time, at each regular scheduled meeting, the school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room on the laptop and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when three minutes have passed. There are no individuals signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, public address is closed. Consent items.
I move approval of consent items.
We don't need to.
Second.
It's consent. We don't need a motion.
No, we don't need it. Is there anything that you want to be pulled from consent for discussion or consideration? Okay. The personnel report. Do I have a motion to adopt the personnel report? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And no also, and I'm opposing it because of selfish reasons. Mary Miller is the bookkeeper at Blacksburg High School, and she's retiring. And she's terrific. She's been there for 37 years, and I don't want to see her go. So, but I did talk to her today, and she's considering doing a lot of traveling throughout the states that she hasn't seen. So I guess I will vote no with a lot of comprehension. Payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Move we pay the bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Superintendent's Report, Recommendations, and Announcements. We now move into the Superintendent's Reports. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. Your first agenda item tonight is a grant proposal. It's entitled Montgomery County Prevention Partners Drug-Free Communities Project. On behalf of the Montgomery County Prevention Partners Coalition, Montgomery County Public Schools has applied for a SAMHSA, for a Drug-Free Communities Support Program Grant in the amount of $124,969 per year for five years. With this funding, Montgomery County Prevention Partners will establish and strengthen community collaboration in support of local efforts and activities to prevent youth substance use across the county. This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Other than this looks really good. Okay, let's.
Need to vote on?
Take a vote on that.
Call a question?
All the, I don't think it is. Is it? It's not roll call. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is an adjustment of the 2012-2013 school year calendar, basically asking that the board set the last day of the school year. The Code of Virginia requires attendance for either 180 days or 990 instructional hours. Even in consideration of the days and hours that we've lost due to weather this year, and using our shortest instructional day, which happens to be the elementary school day, we still have 178 days and 1,023.50 instructional hours that we will accumulate by the end of the school year. In light of the last day of school scheduled as an early release day on Monday, June 3rd, I recommend the board consider selection of Friday, May 31st, as the last day of school for students, and that that day be an early release for all. This would provide 177 days of instruction, but exceeds the minimum hours and with 1,017.50 instructional hours. Note that our secondary schools would have had more instructional hours than that. If this recommendation is approved, teachers would then return on Monday, June 3rd, and Tuesday, June 4th, for the end-of-the-year workdays. The proposed last day of school meets all state requirements and makes efficient use of time and transportation. We've asked that you consider this as an action item this evening so that we can make our community aware of the last day of school.
Do I have a motion to approve the last day of school as Friday, May 31st, and the last workday for teachers as June 4th?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
In reality, with that half a day being on a Friday, how many students are really going to be in school?
Probably more than would come on Monday. That was my fault.
I understand. My thought is, there may be more on Thursday, if we're still meeting the requirements, you know? If we're not going to have a significant number of students in school for half a day, you know, just as a consideration.
I, you know, I think the Monday would, my position would be that the Monday would have greater likelihood for people not coming back than the Friday.
I'm saying Thursday.
I understand. Let Thursday be the last day. I think you're going to have a last day of school that includes a lot of celebrations and those kinds of things, regardless of when it is. And that kids and families may be likely to come on the Friday. But certainly I can adjust because we do have the leverage, if that's the desire of the board. It would then bring your teachers back on Monday. Final planning days would become the Friday and the Monday, as opposed to the Monday and the Tuesday.
Any other discussion? My thoughts.
Have you?
Go ahead. Who?
Oh.
Go ahead.
And did you discuss this with, you know?
I discussed it with, I discussed it with my staff.
Yeah.
Who teach, who speak regularly with teachers and administrators in our schools.
Any other comments? My only comments would be, parents. I know they're, they're looking to not have to send their students to school on Monday, and I know that they're hoping it'll be Friday, and I'm wondering what kind of a difficulty it would cause if we made it Thursday. Parents, pardon me? Speak into your mic. Is your mic on?
I think so. I'm just saying that I think parents may want that one day on Friday.
What, what do you say?
Like you said, the childcare and the one day was helpful, but.
I think it's.
It's just one day.
Yeah.
So I was, I'm not clear on what you're saying. We keep the one, the half a day?
Keep it the way it is versus change it?
I could give it away.
You mean keep it the way it is with the last day of school being on Monday?
No, the last day is on Friday.
Friday.
What Ms. Blackburn is recommending?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let me, let me repeat the motion, and we'll take a vote on it. Is there any other discussion first? The motion is that the last day of school be Friday, May 31st, and the last workday for teachers would be June 4th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries.
Pardon me?
Yeah. So we now have a last day of school for students, May 31st, with early dismissal for all that day. Teachers returning on June 3rd and 4th for final planning. Next item is the Superintendent's Report on the Special Education Annual Plan for 2013-2014. The Board received the Special Education Annual Plan as an information item at your last meeting. It's presented this evening for your approval. Ms. Gilli is not present with us this evening, but we do have Julie Ligon and Lisa Holland available to assist me if there should be some questions. It's for your action for approval this evening.
Is there a discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve for discussion.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, second.
Okay. I really don't have a problem with the moving to the nine weeks, but I do have a problem going that length of time without some kind of formal requirement.
We're not to that one yet.
No, no, we're.
We're on the special education plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. You're just ahead of us.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the special education plan.
I'll say that too, okay.
Are there any other comments? I do have a question. On page 11 of the plan.
I don't, Julie and Lisa?
Is it possible to pull page 11 up? And it really doesn't warrant them coming to the podium.
Okay. I'm happy to look at. Oh, well, we'll get to thank them for being here tonight to help us out, okay?
Anyway, I'll.
This is getting a little rough.
It's okay. The problem I have with the, I don't have a problem with this at all. Let me make sure that you understand that. But students are all ages, all children ages 2 through 21 inclusive are to be educated. And I think that's right, and I think it's admirable, and I think it's, and I know it's the law. Yet, we have a budget coming up here where we're continually cutting and cutting and cutting. And I'm looking at our special ed, I'm looking at our gifted program, and in our gifted program, we've cut the director to half-time. The program, in my opinion, has been disseminated to the point where I don't know how they, they came up with a program with their presentation several weeks ago, and I thought, wow, how in the world did they do it with such little money? And indications are that we're going to have less money this year unless we dig in and say, no more cuts. We're done cutting. I think every program that we have should look like this page 11 on the special education page. We should have these benefits for every child in our school, not just those who are challenged. We need it for every single child, and the only way to do that is to stop cutting. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. So Julie and Lisa, you didn't have to come up after all, but we thank you all for coming tonight.
There's a motion on the floor. The, could you read the motion? And there's a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we're.
Now we're, now we're at the nine-week grading period.
I was just waiting. Okay, here we go.
So the item before you this evening is an information item. It's for the board's consideration. Secondary teachers were surveyed for input regarding moving to a nine-week reporting period for middle and high schools. As you know, our elementary schools are already on a nine-week reporting period. There was a 95% participation rate in the survey. There was significant support from both middle and high school teachers for moving from a six-weeks grading period to a nine-week grading period. The item is presented, as I said, for information tonight and will be brought to you as an action item in the April 19th meeting. I'd like to especially thank our technology department, Harvey Goodwin, and the Office of Secondary Education, Nelson Simkins and Karen Fane for coordinating the survey.
Okay, so I'll comment now. As far as the, some type of interim reporting formal that goes home to the parents, because in that, in that survey, I believe between the two, high school and middle school, there was only about seven who didn't feel that they needed to have some kind of formal reporting before the end of that nine-week period. So I think that's something that needs to be included.
Can we move this to an action tonight? Is that possible?
I would respond to Ms. Franklin's comment. We would establish implementing procedures once the board approved, or if the board approved the nine-week grading period. And in the conversations that I've had with Mr. Simkins about the implementing procedures, it would be required that there be a mandatory interim report that would be available either using parent, the parent portal that we have, or for parents who request it, a hard copy. So that would be our intervention to ensure that parents would receive notification about their student's progress at four and a half weeks.
Okay. So how would we notify parents if they wanted to receive a written?
Just like we did this year. We had it at registration, and we advised parents through our communication plan about parent portal, because we're doing interims this year that way. And we advised parents through the newsletters, through registration, everywhere, that if they wanted a hard copy, they needed only to notify the school.
And we'll do some kind of big announcement to let folks know that we're moving to the nine weeks.
We will absolutely have a communication plan. And we've not developed the implementing procedures yet because it's not yet been approved by the board, but it is my full intent that it have the mandatory mid, mid nine-week reporting requirement.
Two, two questions. Are you satisfied with your schedule for this?
I'm, I'm satisfied with it, yes.
Does the board need any more information on this? Do we, do you feel as though we need to vote on this tonight, or?
I think the survey tells the results here. I'd like to move that we approve moving secondary education to nine weeks schedule.
I'll second it.
How does this work? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Does this work okay with your schedule?
Yes, it does, and we do, we've already identified for you what the calendar would look like if we moved to nine-week grading periods, so we've established that piece as well.
Okay. Any more discussion? Brenda, do you have the motion? Okay. So the, the motion on the floor is to adopt the nine-week grading period for the secondary schools, and there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity. Go ahead and start publicizing that change. The next item is the budget update, and as you're aware, the Board of Supervisors will make a final determination regarding county funding for education at their meeting on April 15th. In preparation for that decision, the supervisors offered two community forums for input, and then held a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and the proposed budget at their meetings on 3/26. The voices for supporting public education in Montgomery County were very evident at all three meetings. I remain optimistic that the county will increase funding for Montgomery County Public Schools by approximately $2.2 million for 2013-2014. That includes 1.7 from revenue, general county revenue, and an additional .5 million that comes from the increase in personal property tax. Despite the fact that our county continues to step forward, there remains a gap in funding between the needs of Montgomery County Public Schools and the actual dollars that may be there, and that's with counting on the supervisors to approve the budget and the funds for education that have been recommended by the county manager. At this time, I urge our board and our citizenry to continue to communicate to the Board of Supervisors the necessity of the additional funds in order to preserve as many of our educational programs as possible, to improve the competitiveness of our salary schedule, and to take care of the remaining 4% required transfer of funding for VRS for 2013-2014. From my perspective, I will continue to evaluate the best approach to covering the estimated gap between funding, including the $2.2 million from the Board of Supervisors, and the very encumbered $600,000 from the state, and the needs of a $1.4 million gap. And I'll bring you some recommendations on April 16th that will be followed by a special board workshop on the budget for 2013-2014. And that's my budget report this evening.
Any comments?
No, I'll just say it again. Our, what, the state has ducked us, what, close to 10 million over the last eight years, is it?
We are $10 million below the level of state funding in 2008-2009 for the 2012-2013 school year, and that fund, that reduction would be $600,000 smaller in 2013-2014. So approximately $9.4 million less in state funds next year than there was in 2008-2009.
Incredible. Eighth wealthiest state in the nation. Say no more.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Again, I would reiterate the importance of that April 15th meeting and the continued presence of an education voice in the room. Next item is textbook adoption 3 through 5 for science. This is an information item also. I previously provided you with some information about the proposed science adoptions through your board update, and I made available to you the opportunity to review the materials. The item is an info item tonight, and Dr. Goodrow is available to answer any questions you may have. I would commend Patty and the teachers who participated in the selection process for their work on this project. As you may know, our student performance on science testing measures is one of our academic performance highlights year after year. The selection process used by the teachers and Patty focused on maintaining this success and providing students with great hands-on experience in science.
Any comments?
I'm just curious, I'm glad to, to read that the parents probably were involved as well, coming to check out the.
Yes.
Material.
And it's, it's advertised in the newspaper as well.
Any other comments?
I just have a question. With these books, will there be an option to see them online versus, I know in some of the recent books we've had, parents can sign saying, we'll be able to use the online version? Is that an option?
Yes. That is an option again with this textbook.
This is a redundant question, but what, when are we going to move into the 21st century? Why are we still using books? This would be a great opportunity to get iPads. Patty, you're smiling. Have you investigated that? And, and it just seems to me that this would be the prime opportunity to jump into that. And, and here we've got $100,000 that we're spending on books, and I wonder how far that would go for iPads.
Well, it wouldn't go far enough to put one in the hands of all of our students.
Use the mic.
Oh, yeah. It wouldn't go far enough to put an iPad in the hands of all of our students, so it would require some significant planning to be able to make that decision as to whether we think the iPad is the way to go and how we would implement something like that for all of our students.
We're not thinking about, it's, it's.
Yeah, but for me, you're, you're talking about an iPad. The seminars that I've gone to, they're basically talking about a basic Kindle, just something, I mean, and you're talking hundreds cheaper, and yet that's a 21st century learning, reading, you know, capability, but it's not an iPad. That's, you know, some of the things that I've gone to, that's, and that's more feasible. I mean, you know, you're talking a $70 Kindle, basically.
Well, these would be the kinds of things that we would have to compare and contrast and really come to an informed decision before we could go out and do that. And we'd also have to ensure that students would all have access to that information, both in their schools and in their homes. And there would just be a number of things that we would need to look at. I know some school systems in the nation are beginning to move in that direction, but we may be able to learn a lot from those school systems.
Oh, maybe, maybe, lost my train of thought. Anyway.
Great retreat topic, though. I just made myself a note over here. You know, what is the board's position on one-on-one computer initiatives? And, you know, would we ever be able to find a way to fund it? And what percent of our community does not have access outside of, you know, school computing devices?
And all of the science textbooks are available online, so students can access every science textbook from their home computers.
Yeah. Which certainly saves dragging at home, doesn't it?
I think we have to be careful, too, in assuming that all students would enjoy learning and reading from a Kindle.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, there's a lot that even though they have that, those opportunities, still enjoy having a book. So it's a good way to talk to the students.
Well, we're hoping that within the next several years, you'll be able to apply for a grant that will, through the Montgomery County Educational Foundation, that will give every kid an either, I don't care if it's a Kindle, I don't care what it is, a phone, but something that they can take home that's 21st century that they can learn with, preferably an iPad.
That would be exciting.
Yes, it would.
It would just be used for school matters. Is that right?
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly.
Yet another consideration. Yet another consideration.
That's why he stick with Kindle.
Yes.
That's part of our retreat discussion. Thank you.
I would only be for it if it were that, with the.
Yes. So the item was for your information this evening. We'll bring it back for action at the next meeting.
Are we ready to go ahead and vote on that, too?
No.
No.
The next item is a presentation regarding a Governor STEM Academy proposal for Montgomery County Schools. I'm very excited about the potential for a STEM Academy in Montgomery County. And although the state financial support is minimal for these academies, it's like $5,000 that you can apply for. Every penny counts in the current economic climate. And Patty, Goudreau, and Rick Weaver have taken a leadership role in submitting a request for these startup funds. It doesn't have a budget yet, so you haven't seen it in your grants approval process. But we wanted to give you a little taste of what this initiative is about. And regardless of the outcome of the Governor's financial support, we're moving ahead to make STEM academies a reality in Montgomery County. Rick and Patty are going to share with you this evening some of their vision and the support that we've already garnered for STEM in Montgomery County. And although there's a listing attached to your agenda this evening of preliminary partners, this list will continue to grow and expand as we continue to move forward with this idea.
What is the preliminary partners? What do the partners actually do?
They're on, well, I'll let Patty and Rick tell you. It's part of their presentation.
We'll describe that to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Montgomery County Schools is in the process of submitting an application to the Virginia Department of Education for a Governor STEM Academy. This effort has been led by myself and Patty with the assistance of the very able assistance of Laura Williams. By way of a state superintendent's memo, school divisions across the Commonwealth were invited to apply to the Virginia Department of Education for planning grants that could be used to implement Governor STEM academies. These academies are intended to encourage the development of local rigorous programs of study that promote pathways to employment in science, technology, engineering, and math disciplines, commonly referred to as STEM. Sixteen Governor STEM academies have been previously established in the state. Most of those are in the larger urban areas, such as Arlington County. Recently, Carroll County and Renett County in our region have established academies. If we are awarded this designation, the Virginia Department of Education will provide $5,000, as Ms. Blackburn said, for planning purposes. We expect that most of these funds would be used to provide professional development to the teachers who would be teaching under the umbrella of the academy. Any necessary equipment to support the academy would be purchased with existing state and federal funding sources, CTE funding sources. If we do not receive the grant funds, we still expect to continue the implementation of this grant using currently available resources. The academy, the Virginia Department of Education indicated that the academy had to be listed in one location, a primary location, even though we intend to serve all four high schools with this academy. So the location we are designating is Christiansburg High Schools because of its role as the CTE Academy Center already. We do intend to service all the high schools with this project.
The academy model is a deliberate connection between the career pathways, advanced manufacturing skills, which you see listed on the screen, and a capstone project that allows students to apply their learning. And we came up with this by doing a little backwards planning from our current robotics program, which, as you know, has been in place for a number of years, and has students working each year on a project that has them building and designing a robot that will perform a specific task that changes. This year's task happens to be tossing frisbees at a very precise target. And so Rick and I looked at the different skills that our students use in creating their robots, and we saw clearly engineering and design. We, we also saw students that were very proficient at AutoCAD, because that's the way that they communicate their designs and their intentions. They use a lot of computer skills, both information technology and programming types that enable them to program the logic controllers that operate the different parts of the robot. They also do a number of machining and welding tasks that allow them to build very unique parts to meet the needs of their design. And so what we wanted to do was to allow students to really explore those skill sets through the academy, and to concentrate on one or maybe more of those skill sets that will allow them to, to develop expertise, which they would then bring to the capstone project, which is our robotics competition.
Each of these skill sets were found in existing CTE programs in Montgomery County. We identified eight goals in our application to the Department of Ed. The first goal reflects our intent to expose students to the real world of advanced manufacturing and engineering through a variety of experiences.
The second goal is to engage our students in some exciting projects. And we took this, again, from the robotics program. And what we're hoping to do is come up with some smaller design and build projects that will go into all of the courses in the STEM Academy.
We also hope to encourage more students to pursue post-secondary technical training by exposing them to skills and careers that they may have very little familiarity with.
We're very excited about the fourth goal, which is embraced by the Curriculum Department, because it will allow us to design some special professional development that will include our core teachers in helping them to plan for and to see the connections between what they teach and different career paths. We believe this will make learning very relevant to our students.
We believe that the academy can connect students from different backgrounds and who have different aspirations.
And we hope to do this by emulating some of the workplace collaboration that we all experience by having our students work together in teams to accomplish goals.
We plan to use individualized plans of study to help students select the best career choice for themselves, and to expose them to those careers and give them real-world experience with that particular career.
And our final goal is to plan to actively recruit students who are underserved by making it clear to students and their parents what the academy is offering in support of future career opportunities. To that end, we identified the career clusters that are applicable to the academy. And these clusters, there are 16 of them total, and they were developed through the National Career and Technical Education Consortium. And obviously, we have a strong match to the cluster, the STEM cluster, which integrates science, technology, engineering, and math. But our academy can go beyond that, including some advanced manufacturing, which essentially is automation, and that's what the robotics program is all about. And so we've got a number of manufacturing courses that we can include, and information technology because of the heavy use of computers in all of this.
The National Career Cluster encompasses 64 career pathways, which really run the gamut of available jobs out there in the broader world for our students. We chose seven of those pathways because those are the pathways that are directly related to the skill sets in the robotics program that we plan to use as a capstone project. And they also are articulated with specific programs at New River Community College, and through the community college are further articulated to programs at Virginia Tech and Radford University.
Another requi, oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is mine?
Yep.
Okay. Bear with me.
These career pathways will prepare students for programs leading to bachelor's degrees, two-year associate's degrees, community college diplomas, community college certificates, apprenticeships, and direct employment.
Another requirement that we had was to involve the community in our planning process. So, we invited people from local businesses, from higher education, from workforce and economic development, and from our own school department to join us in sort of thinking about what a STEM Academy would look like and what career pathways we thought were really relevant to Montgomery County. And we had some, some great attendance there, and we ended up, from that initial meeting, with 14 formal signed agreements from different agencies in our county, offering their support. Most of that support is in terms of allowing us access to what they know, and, including placing students in internships or in job shadowing situations in those areas, even some financial and planning commitments from some of those groups as well. So, and we think we can grow that number. We think that this is just the beginning, that there will be many other businesses and institutions that would like to join us. We also had to identify a governing board, and their primary responsibility is to oversee the implementation of the academy in our school system.
So why is a school division, should we create a STEM Academy? It's our belief that the deliberate integration of science, math, and CTE curricula in an academy format will strengthen all three curricular areas and better prepare students for their chosen career path. As a best practice, the superintendent and curriculum supervisors support the academy concept. We expect that the academy can be a model for future curriculum design. Our presentation tonight was intended to inform you, as the superintendent said. We are actively working still with the Department of Ed and hope to formally submit our application to the Virginia State Board of Education on May the 23rd. We'll keep you posted.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was curious to know, the governing board is made up of people in the school district, and then the advisory committee is from the community. Is that the way they set it up at the state level?
Yes. And the governing board is part of the advisory committee as well. So they're, they're a subset.
So, the governing board is like an executive committee?
Yes, exactly.
And do you happen to know the people in the community, the 14?
You have it.
Yes, I think it was in your packet.
Oh, I didn't think.
It's an attachment.
Oh, thank you.
Would the idea be that students apply to be going to this academy, or?
Yes, there will be an application and counseling process. Heavy on the counseling.
And could you, as a student, maybe still take robotics and not be part of the academy? Or take these other courses you have available?
Yes. Robotics program as it now exists won't change dramatically in that respect. We don't, we don't want to close any doors.
We think we're just going to see an increased number of students participating.
And is, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, do you envision several new classes being offered as part of this in the future?
Well, interestingly, these classes are classes that we already have on our books. In some cases, it's going to be, you know, reintegrating them into the program. And I don't know that we'll be offering every class every semester. We're going to have some, some constraints there, but not a lot of new classes now.
The idea really is about getting kids to see a comprehensive set of programs, several different areas of exposure, leading to the skills that would allow them to complete the capstone project, and to be very successful in academic and/or practical activities that are related to STEM after graduation from high school.
Ms. Blackburn?
You've already answered my first question, which was, you know, targeting our underserved students and their parents, which is key. So, at what, at what grade level would you be looking at to help folks understand you can get a degree or a certificate that will make you employable, possibly?
As far as notifying students and parents of possibilities, we expect the greatest effort to begin in the middle school. And we're going to tie that very closely to the academic and career plan that we are implementing currently in the division, to, that counselors use with students to help them plan their high school and post-high school experience.
So I hope that would be sixth grade, not eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay. And for children, especially of that age, for me, it seems that if they, if they could actually see what that career would look like with some of these partners. I know, we used to have tours that we took children on to be able to see what they would like to do or what they definitely would not like to do, right?
We expect that'll be the greatest value our partners add to this effort, is to be able to show students really what the job place is about.
I'm, I'm very excited about the possibility, you know, how I feel about our CET program and opening that up to students to help them understand you can make a good living here. And to be able to partner with our higher ed folks in the area, I'm just real excited. So, real excited.
I feel like we had a lot of excitement at our public meeting. I think the energy there was very strong.
I'm really excited because it gives another alternative.
The Montgomery County Educational Foundation, while reaching out for those people who wanted to donate, we ran across a lot of people who were strictly interested in STEM. So, there's people out there. There's lots of people out there who are willing to, to help you, and I hope you continue to seek those folks out, because this, this program is, is, is great. But you can't do without the funds. And the funds are out there. There are companies out there who are, who have indicated to us that they want to donate money to STEM-type projects. So...
That's good to know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rick and Patty. Appreciate your presentation and your leadership in this effort. And the last item under superintendent's reports this evening is your standard April calendar, which includes both division-wide activities and the fine arts calendar for the month of November, for the month of April. I don't want to get back to November. Okay.
We're not doing that.
Back to you, Mr. Otters.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Are there any matters previously introduced which have come up over the preceding meetings that anyone would like to discuss?
We talked about our nutrition program, and, you know, some of the concerns with the new requirements, and I just hear a lot, and maybe we have a presentation on that. I even recommended some sampling.
Yes, you did. And it's on our radar. We just haven't gotten to it yet. April's going to be pretty full with special meetings and things, but we will do that.
Along with that, did you all see the email from Mr. Jones, talking about the retreat? He came up with what I thought was a, a good suggestion. Help me with this. I believe he wants to discuss the, the school board members' self-evaluation. And I think that's something that I have been looking forward to for a long time. I think we really need to come up with a vehicle where, where we can evaluate ourselves or each other, however he wants to present that. It's very difficult to know how well you're doing or how poorly you're doing when the only indication is a four-year vote. So, so I'm looking forward to an evaluation process.
He also provided you a link to one, a document that you all have seen before and talked about at a previous retreat, so that you could look at it again and be prepared to evaluate whether that would meet the needs of a self-evaluation. So I think everybody needs to take a look at that and then provide some feedback perhaps at the next meeting or prior to that, to Mr. Jones.
If I recall, it was page 22 on through about page 30. It was very informative. I'm glad he did that. Any other unfinished business?
I would just comment that if others have topics in his email to you all, he gave you some topics that he might be interested in. If, if any of the other board members have topics that you'd like to see discussed, it'd be most helpful to have that from you as soon as possible.
I, I need to just say this to, to, to close up this unfinished business. I, I wasn't for a retreat at all, as you recall, most of you. I, I felt that, that it was not any of the time to spend the money to take the superintendent away, and there was a whole myriad of, of reasons. But now, with this, this new topic and some of the new topics that you have come up with, Ms. Blackburn, the excitement is back, and I'm looking forward to it. New business? Any new business? Announcements, information? Ms. Albritton?
Yeah, just to remind us that on the 4th, Thursday, the Christiansburg High School students will have their art at the Montgomery Museum, and I hope that we can show up.
Anyone else? Agenda preparation. Let me find that. Okay, if you see Agenda Preparation, April 16th, the meeting there, the 25th is, is the budget work session. The 29th is the public hearing.
Special meeting for a public hearing.
Special meeting for a public hearing, correct? And then you see the May 7th and the May 14th, May, May 7th being the operating budget. That's for, that's for us, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. And then May 14th is the joint meeting with the supervisors. And then May 21st would be our meeting with seniors of the month and teachers of the year, and so on. Any comments on the agenda preparation? Adjournment. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can't believe it.
We are adjourned.
Good work, Joe.
Thank you.